Appeal grants, that was the micro grants that we're giving out to downtown businesses that have a project that's gonna increase the curb appeal of town, so painting, lighting, signage. And either today or tomorrow, I'm gonna notify the businesses that applied and then tomorrow or Friday, we'll put out a public announcement about which ones were awarded grants and you'll see those projects happening this fall. We asked that everyone finish them by the end of November, so it'll be a little bit over ten thousand dollars invested in a number of different businesses downtown, specifically in the street fronts. Our second concert of the Dancing in the Streetlight series, the mini-series that we're doing in partnership with the city, just to see how it works out. It's coming up on September twenty seventh, that's a Saturday, from six to ten P M at Healing Waters Plaza. Similar to the one that we did in August, it's just a very casual event, bring lawn chairs, we'll have a couple food trucks, we'll have two bands playing Tequila Nights at six and The Consequences at eight. So please plan to attend that and tell your networks about that one as well. And I sent you guys the Addiglands document, so if you guys have any questions about other Main Street things, please get in touch with me. Thank you.
Greetings, Commissioners. I thank Commander Your Whitehead for his workaround and adding my original communique on this issue into public record at the last meeting. Nearly twenty-three hundred National Guard troops from seven states have been stationed in the District of Columbia since August eleventh. Why? The District of Columbia, a federal city, originally had home rule. Congress usurped that power in eighteen seventy, in part when black men got voted. For almost a hundred years, everything from a textbook to a garbage truck went through Congress. Or like I was a school student there, my textbooks had to be approved by Congress. In nineteen seventy-three, some limited home rule was granted, yet Congress can still overrule any city council legislation, which it did, like on the marijuana law. D C has one non-voting representative serving in Congress. The President oversees D C's National Guard and has limited thirty-day possibility to federalize the D C Metropolitan Police Department. Those thirty days are up today. Do we want guard members patrolling our streets? Actually, in D C, mostly they're cleaning up work, filling in the reduced national parks workforce cut by Doge and Congress. You take an oath of office to uphold the Constitution. I urge you to pass a resolution that supports that commitment as it applies for our fellow citizens in D C. When one group has lesser rights, we all are threatened. D C is used as a testing ground for extreme actions that cannot be readily initially applied in other parts of the country. In this case, it is an authorization that stretches way beyond our Constitution. There is no emergency. You may see your role solely as dealing with legislation regarding our municipality. But we are all citizens of the United States. It is not a moment to sit on the sidelines. I would like to see my local representatives as a way of serving and protecting my rights to advocate for citizens in D C. I provided you all a draft, which I hope you will consider and pass at your next meeting. I would be glad to ask of any questions you may have. Thank you.
Kathleen Sloan, seven oh eight, Billingsburg. I ask that you have a town hall about this electric study. They followed the packet. It's very scant. This has been going on for a year, year and a half, maybe two years. Cost five hundred thousand dollars, half a million, that's a lot of money. The presentation is not in layman's terms. I ask that it be interpreted and that, you know, the people have a question and answer period. And, you know, the same company did the twenty fifteen study and they tagged and located all the assets. They did it again, evidently internally, we're not keeping up with that, we're having to pay a lot of money for that. And the packet, the presentation has no financial estimates. It gives future scenarios, but it doesn't give any clear idea state of the current system. So that needs to be done and through the years, you know, the most public complaints I've heard is about the cost of electric bills. And our electric rates have always been higher than the state or the U S average as it is today. And when you were thinking about selling the electric company, there were five studies done according to a reliable knowledge, very knowledgeable source. I input that two or three times, no such copies exist, you guys didn't get copies of those studies, although the public paid for half of it. So, you know, we've really been waiting for four years, since twenty twenty-one, to figure out what's going on and especially after in one point three to one point six million emergency purchase of one of the transformers. I didn't see anything in the packet material that indicated whether we need to replace the other fifty, sixty-year-old electric transformer. So there's a lot of missing information. We need, you know, the public has paid and paid and paid. And they, they should get the information in layman's terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I think I conclude our public comments for today. Let's move on to presentations. Item number D two, Presentation Electrical Distribution Total System Asset Management Plan. Mr. Lopez and Mr. Perea, after Mr.
Mark Merle. Mayor, fellow Commissioners. So yes, T and D is just about done wrapping up the T and D report for the Electric Department Study. They are here this morning to give you a presentation of their findings and everything. At this time, I would like to introduce Willie Lopez and Robert Ferr. They're gonna turn up here and give you a summary of it.
Thank you.
Your heads there, Commissioners. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name's Robert Perea. I'm the manager of the Planning Division at T and D Services. The objective of our work was to Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. The objective of our work was to assess the performance of the electric distribution system and identify any concerns, any deficiencies in the system either currently or in the future. It was a collaborative effort at T and D Services. It took all of our divisions, all the areas of our company to make this project happen and to deliver the product, the product that you need. Some of those, some of those representatives from our company are on the call. I would like to introduce those.
Yes, good morning. All right, can be video on.
Thanks, Harry.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Kenny Adams, Director of Stations Engineering for T and D Services. And look forward to talking through some of the items related to the set visit that was conducted a couple months back on the T R C station. Thank you.
Thank you. J R.
But yes, good morning. J R, Controller, the manager of our Project Management Division.
Thanks, J R. Steve?
Yep, I'm Steve Brooks. I'm a contributing project engineer on this project.
Thank you, Steve. We want to make sure that all questions or concerns are addressed today, certainly throughout the presentation. Be sure to ask any questions and we'll make sure that those get addressed. If we can't do that today, we'll certainly do that moving forward. Like introduce Willie Lopez. He was the lead engineer on the project and will be making the presentation. Thanks for the time. We look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Perea.
Morning, everybody. Thank you for having us today to present the T R C's Asset Management Plan. So the scope of the assessment, build inventory, sorry, with build inventory. Cruise completed, filled inventory documenting electrical system components, geolocations and images of all the components of the electrical distribution system. We took all that information and built a G I S comprehensive model, basically geo-reference inventory piece that can be managed on a computer and updated live or any changes. Also, a computer model for electrical analysis was computed created, essentially a digital twin of the electrical distribution system. So any analysis run on it would reflect pretty much exactly what we were seeing out in the field down to really very mild margin of error. Next, a performance assessment was done from now until twenty forty-five. That would address any voltage or overloading concerns and also any protection concerns. And then we would evaluate the results of that assessment and give any recommendations that would improve performance, operability and reliability. Some short-term recommendations involve some substation maintenance. We would like to update the feeder relay settings. Some midterm recommendations, update feeder breakers and their relays and feeder getaway conductors. Another midterm recommendation would be to improve metering. The updating relays and metering will improve, will give you the chance to have detailed data about your system, which will give you the information to make reliable decisions on how to balance or make any changes to that system to improve any issues. The other long-term recommendations would be possibly adding a new substation for redundancy and reliability.
Can I just interrupt you for a second? I, I don't know about all of you out there, but what you're talking about, I already understood what the words are coming out of your mouth. So can you explain what a feeder relay is, what are feeder breakers and feeder getaway conductors?
Definitely. So when we talk about a feeder, we have a substation which has a transformer. The transformer takes the electricity from the transmission lines, would be your carrier, either P and M or Christ Day, I believe you guys use Christ Day at the moment. That would then step down the voltage at the transformer to your distribution voltage. Once it stepped down your distribution voltage after the transformer, you would then break it up into sections based on capacity. So you would say, okay, here's a big group, we can't serve all this group with one feeder. We need to break it up into, let's say, three, so that the capacity is not overloading any wire. And also that there's sufficient protection, so that way if there is a fault out there, it doesn't take up the whole city. So then you would break it up into kind of like a fractal or from there. So you would have, for instance, you guys have two transformers and six feeders. So there would be three feeders on each transformer. And so that allows for the capacity to be maintained in each one of those feeders and also sufficient protection, so that way if there's any faults, if the whole city doesn't get taken out, only that neighborhood or that section that serves that feeder. Also, there's fusing downline from the feeder. That would then also catch some of those faults without ripping the entire feeder also. So that's in the shortest amount of time I can explain a feeder.
That's a feeder, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Feeder relay and feeder breakers or?
And so at the, at the feeder, at, right at the feeder takeoff, there will be a feeder breaker and a feeder relay. That's gonna read currents on the line, on the electrical line and feed it back to a computer. That computer is then gonna make decisions based on the current that it's reading to stay open, I mean, stay closed, which means it's closed in, the switch is closed in, feeding power. If there is a certain current that can tell that computer, we need to open, this is, this is dangerous. It will then open up the feeder and that happens when there are some faults. And so a feeder breaker is essentially the same thing that you would have at your house in your, in your breaker compartment. It operates a little bit more complicated and has more brains to it, where the feeder breaker in your house is electromechanical, a spring gets hot, expands and then opens the switch. Where a feeder relay at a, at a feeder head would be using a processor to process that information. And in that processor, you can use it for many, many other things than just protection. It could, it can meter the, the electrical power, the current, the voltage, all of that and store it for, you know, a year's time. And if anything were to happen, it can be investigated by an engineer to know exactly what's going on for any, you know, maintenance purposes or troubleshooting purposes. It could also be used for for important data on, on when the power usage is high or low and, and solar peaks and stuff like that, to be able to better manage for efficiency, load shedding or operations where you might need to transfer load onto another feeder, stuff like that. So it gives you, it can give you a lot of information with newer technology that can be implemented to meter the data. And also make smarter decisions by detecting faults or anything happening.
Anything happening.
Downline.
Downline.
To make a
To make a smart opinion, yes. Opinion, yes, sir.
You're welcome.
Give us just a second.
So you don't worry.
That way you don't have to fight the echo.
No worries.
Kenny, can you still hear us?
Certainly, you're you, but.
If I'd have been smart, I'd have asked both these questions years ago, saying, I don't even know what the words are, you know, and they don't play no sense.
Yeah, we're happy to answer any questions.
Electric talk and
And yeah, and I'm totally happy with breaking down any, any wording for anybody.
Do that as you go forward.
Lopez, I guess you can go.
Okay, so yeah, the methodology, basically, the model is developed, the electrical model is developed from the G I S model, which was developed from collecting all of the equipment on the lines. The feeder loads, which is the electricity that's being used on the system, needed to be modeled to, to assess the system. We had to basically artificially spread the load out on the system to give us the best way to model the system accurately to what the loads might be like in real life. Basically trying to model the consumption of all the consumers. And so we did that based on allocated transformer K V A. So that means a transformer has a certain capacity. And based on the total amount of load, that was then spread out through the system based on how big that transformer was. And so having metering data, accurate metering data will improve that model to where we're modeling it exactly to what the consumers are using. Because we would have the exact meter usage and we would tie that into the meter usage at the feeder and then spread that load directly according to the feeder, the meter usage on bulb ends and they would tie it all together. And that would help give you a better representation of what's really going on on your system. The study was done for what we have said there, which is N minus zero and N minus one conditions. N minus zero means basic operation, normal conditions. N minus one conditions gives us, is when you have an outage, either a transformer outage or a feeder outage. And then that would mean that when a transformer is out, the other transformer has to pick that load up. If a feeder is out, there has to be another feeder to pick that load up. And so we would model those conditions as well. We also, in this study, since we were projecting up to twenty forty-five, we took your loading data and looked at load growth overall and it was around point nine percent per year. And so we went on the conservative side with one point five percent of load growth per year is to be on the conservative side. And that's the way we approached adding load for the years to come. So we started with the actual load in twenty twenty-five and then for every year, we incremented it by one point five percent. So the study results, here's, here is a map of your T R C electrical system. And as you can see, it's color-coded by feeder. And so you can see the six different feeders labeled there. You've got, you know, Cedar up north, Williamsburg, downtown, South Broadway, Ash at Riverside, all served from the Hot Springs Substation, which, where the two transformers and all the feeder breakers are located. And something I didn't explain them to you when you asked is the feeder getaways would be the conductor that is used to get out of the substation and, and get to your distribution poles to serve these feeders.
And those are all there for substations?
And they would be at the subs, from the substation going either underground, I think all of yours are underground, but either underground or overhead in some instances to get to a pole and then start serving different places. And that is usually what limits a feeder. So if that is a certain size conductor, there's, there's, that can restrain how much load or capacity you can put on that feeder. So improving that will always increase the capacity. So the next slide is just a, a table showing substation slash feeder loads. It, it's a list of K V A through twenty twenty-five through twenty forty-five in five-year increments. And we also have the capacity percentage next to it for each feeder. So that tells you, for instance, if you take Ash at twenty twenty-five, the capacity that that feeder getaway is at is at seventeen percent. So you have right eighty, eighty percent to, to put on that. And as you can see, as we add the load, the capacity is increased because it's been more load is now using up that capacity.
So you're saying that percentage is out of the, when that feeder, we're only using seventeen percent, but we have a capacity for?
Yes, ma'am. But don't take that capacity as necessarily having tons of room, because when you do have outages, you are picking up another feeder and that can double or triple sometimes that capacity. And so you, you do want around, you know, fifty percent capacity to spare for when those outages happen. So next, next slide. Voltage, voltage conditions for normal operating conditions. We have a table here. And this is based on a one-twenty volt scale. So one hundred and twenty volts is what you're gonna read at, at your typical outlet in a residential or commercial building like so. And so we display these voltages in terms of one-twenty volts. As you can see, the voltage can vary. You're never gonna have one hundred and twenty volts on your electrical distribution system everywhere, always. You have voltage rise and voltage drop, drop due to certain phenomenon on the system. One easy way to explain it is for sure, you're gonna always have voltage drop. Because if you think about it as, as if it were a water system and, and you had a hose for a long distance and you had a certain water pressure at the, at, at the, at the head of the hose, if you had a two, three hundred foot long hose, that pressure is gonna drop. And pressure in, in a water system is analogous to voltage in an electrical system.
So that's why South Broadway is like that?
It's South, South, so South Broadway, you're seeing low voltage there, right in red. And that is not projected until twenty forty or twenty forty-five, so the conditions are actually pretty well. The main reason for those condition is that if you think of that hose and, and more people tapped into that hose to pull some water, you, at the end of it, you're gonna get a, a low, a very low pressure voltage, right? And so that's what's happening. And, but that could be solved because in an electrical system, you essentially have three hoses. And it, to keep it well pressured, the pressure well maintained, you wanna balance the taps on the hoses. So you, you, if you're tapping off that hoses and let's say you have thirty people to serve water with, you would wanna serve ten people off of each hose opposed to having twenty on one and then five and then five. You, you would wanna balance the system. It's essentially the same way it works on electrical distribution system. And the, the, I, the findings that we see in that is that there is, the phasing is a little bit unbalanced and with a little bit of phasing, phase balancing, that could actually resolve those, those voltages there. So basically, it's, it's a, one phase is getting drained more than the other and that's why that, those voltages are low there.
That's a good
So here's another figure to kind of display where we're seeing those issues that we just talked about. And in twenty forty-five, so he highlighted in red where we're seeing those low voltage issues. And, and again, most of those issues can be mitigated with phase balancing. So I can't remember exactly what phase it was, but if we take one, some of the load off of that phase where it's low and spread it to another phase where the voltage is a little bit higher, it, it will help mitigate that, that issue. And that's what the electrical model helps diagnose. When you have an electrical model like that, it's very easily to see that opposed to if you don't have an electrical model. And so having the digital twin, it shows you exactly what is on the system. So this is a projected N one transformer load for Losa Transformers. So this, this histogram might be a little bit hard to kind of visualize what's going on, but this histogram shows the loading on the transformer. And so the heavy loading is all to the right. And the low loading is all to the left. So your middle loading is all that bulk, which is the loading that you guys see most of the time. And so you don't see heavy loading The loading that you guys see most of the time. And so you don't see heavy loading a whole lot of the time. That's why it dwindles. So. It, it's basically like a statistical histogram of the way of your load spread. And so you're not seeing heavy loading very much of the time. But as the, as the load grows, you, you do see that that histogram starts carrying over and that line displayed is showing the transformer limits. And as that, as time progresses, you see the load shifting, which is, means it's growing. Is of, is encroaching and, and surpassing the transformer limits, which uh. Shows that the transformer could be overloaded if you tried to put that load on, or you have to. Uh, in certain conditions, only N minus one. When there's an outage, you would have to shed some load. Which would mean dropping some customers for a while.
So long as it's not my house, I'm okay with.
So the N one minus, uh, N minus one analysis means lots of feeder. This shows um. Is a figure showing some of the issues that we saw, which is, is basically just some. Uh, low voltage every, there's no near term issues, but starting in twenty forty, South Broadway and Williamsburg are seeing some under voltages. Uh, on C phase. And that's very exactly pretty much the same thing we talked about earlier, but in N minus one conditions. Uh, but it. It's no coincidence that in that same condition, you're seeing those same feeders with the, with the issues uh because of the phase imbalance there. Uh, then here's another figure, just uh kinda. Showing some, some other issues, which are some slight overload violations. Um. And that, that also is due to some single phase overloading. So with phase balancing. Uh, that would also resolve that issue. Um. In, in the, and we're not seeing that until twenty forty, twenty forty five, but. Uh, again, just to radiate that the, the phase balancing will really mitigate those issues. So this is the section on the protection analysis, uh, substation, substation breaker settings. Um, so there. We, we had an issue where uh one of the. You could kind of think of these settings as timers. Each, each, each uh, each feeder breaker essentially has a timer on it. And as soon as uh, a, a big current that is not safe. Happens, it reads that current and the timer starts ticking. And as soon as that timer is up, that circuit breaker is gonna open. Uh, when that circuit breaker opens. It's gonna close in again. If that fault is still there, it opens and you could set those operations uh. Differently, but usually it's a, a couple fast shots where a fast timer happens. And then a couple slow shots or a slow timer happens. And then on the fourth shot, it, it locks out, it stays open. That means that fault is permanent. You need, uh, you need a crew to go out there and see, see what happened. And, and uh assess, assess the uh issue. When, when you have a bunch of timers in series. You don't want the furthest upline timer to be anything downline. Um, because then it takes out more customers than necessary, right? Uh, so you want those timers to be synchronized. And there was a slight uh insynchronization. Uh, desynchronization between one of the upline devices and downline devices. And so some of our. Uh, recommendations are to uh will correct that issue. And here is kind of a visual representation and one of the engineering tools we use. Uh, which is light table. Uh, it gets its name. Uh, because uh back in the day, there was an actual light table. Uh, before there was software and you can just do this and you would have these curves and you would lay them on top of each other. And you would be able to see essentially this through a light table, but now we have this beautiful software. That you can just plug and chug. And basically, the uh, the curves on the top are the timers. For an upline device which are protecting the transformers. And the, the curves on the bottom, the red and, the red and uh blue curves are the timers for the, the feeder breakers. Which are downlined from the transformer protection. And you can see on the left side that there's a little bit of overlap there. Right? And then um, on the right side is our recommendation, which. Uh, it's clear cut and dry that those are, those are synchronized. And you could think of the, the Y axis as the time. And the X axis as the current and as. If for a certain current, you move up on that Y axis and that's the time it takes for that circuit to open. It's in a logarithmic scale, but um. Kind of visually seeing that, you could kind of see that uh time progresses as the, as you go up in the Y scale there. Those fat portions uh on the bottom that are colored real block portion. That's a instantaneous operation. We're at a certain current level. We're not even gonna have a timer. We're just gonna, we're just gonna open the circuit. And that's based on fault currents that we calculated to expect on your system, anything. At a certain percentage larger than that, we don't even wanna have timer, something is, something else is, is going on. And we wanna just open. Uh, so. That, that's a visual representation of the work that we did to, to clear up that issue. Uh, this kind of is just an example of substation maintenance uh stuff, just a kind of a punch lift. That both is gonna go through uh that a fresh set of eyes on our substation crew went through and. And just went through and, and just saw any, any stuff that would involve safety precautions or maintenance or theft, anything of that nature. Uh, substation refresh is one of our uh, our main. Uh, recommendations for the system. Uh. So part of it is the. High voltage switches, uh, getting those in, those updated. So that way in a chance of them failing. Uh, tho- those are sometimes. They work order to get those out or sometimes lead times are, are long. And to have something like that come in in a pinch is not always feasible, or it can cost money. So getting that updated and keeps the reliability of the system at, at its highest peak. Peter relay replacement, that is what we discussed earlier in the discussion of modern relays. As you can see in that box there, it has, it has a computer inside. That also stores tons of data. Um, and then also communicate. So there is this endless possibilities. With updating those that you can have other uh relays on the system that it can communicate with. And when there's faults. Um, it would isolate smaller areas and so less consumers are impacted by it. And it also allows you to troubleshoot any issues that happen because all that data is stored. Uh, with real detailed uh graphs and uh very quick data. So it's taking. Uh, data and can do it in microseconds, uh, so we can see. Any fluctuations, harmonic fluctuations that may happen. Uh. So that, that's really useful. And it could also really help you get an idea of, of your loading for any projects that's done in the model in the future. So. If a big customer is coming online or a big solar project is online, that needs to be studied to see the impact on your system. Which a big load can drop the voltage, uh, and a big solar can raise the voltage. And knowing how that's gonna impact your system before it comes on is crucial for knowing what uh. Upgrades are needed to charge on that customer that, you know, that they're, because they're impacting your system, right? So. That would then be able to be negotiated with the customer and cost would be able to be balanced or negotiated uh in that regard. Um, feeder cable replacement, uh, as we talked, uh, some of the uh outage, uh. Theater getaways are a little bit outdated and can be uh. Can be replaced for capacity improvements and reliability. And uh, that, that brings us to an end. Um, I would ready to take any questions from, from anybody.
Yes, sir. Commissioners?
Think that's very fascinating. You know, there's a lot of things about the electrical system that. Certainly, as a commissioner, had no idea what's the language, right? But. Um, the things that you pointed out is just gonna make us have a better, more efficient system, so. I thought it was very interesting. The modeling, I thought, would be really, a really great thing.
Yeah, yes. The mo- the modeling is really, really beneficial to be able to. Uh, trouble to isolate issues and also for any like incoming projects uh for projected issues that may arise.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Um. I remember hearing previously that we've had um a lot of electricity lost in, because of the problems with our system. Um, is this going to help us retain energy and not lose it to? However, we were losing it before. I don't remember. I just remember that being said, but will this help improve the? Use or improve our electrical? Thank you. Will that help im- improve our uh saving electricity in the future?
I mean. That's hard to say. It, it, the model can help isolate those issues, but. The only way to really waste electricity is to have a load running that you don't need. Losses in the cable and transferring the electricity are inherent to this physical, our physical limits in, in. Physical uh, physical laws of nature. Um, so any, any system is gonna have inherent uh losses. Uh. But. It, it can help identify uh some of those by if you're seeing, when, when you have metering, the metering. Updating the metering would actually help identify that more than anything. Uh, because then you would see, okay, why is this usage so much when there's only a twenty five KVA transformer or? What, what's going on there? And. Uh, that losses will happen in the wire. So any, anytime it's happening in the, anytime electricity's. Uh, flowing through a wire, there's gonna be losses. And so transformers have a lot of wire in them. It's, they're just big balls of wire, basically. And as those get outdated, some efficiency could be lost. And maintaining that. Uh, is really what helps with it, any losses, but. Uh. The metering, I think, would, would point those issues out if there was load or any, any big uh. Uh. Inefficiencies, I would say, yeah, that, that would be helped with updating the metering, uh, gathering the data for the metering.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, so my overall impression is that our system really isn't in that bad of a shape. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I, in terms of uh. At an elec- electrical standpoint, I would say so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so even some of our equipment may be thirty eight plus years old. I, I mean, it still has value, right? As long as it's functioning. Um. And it's, it's good. Did, did you guys make an overall assessment of what the value of our system is or generally could be?
The. Value assessment that we conducted is a replacement value. And that would tell you how much it costs, costed to replace your, everything on your system brand new.
Right.
So it, it's not a. It's not a valuation. We, we did an evaluation. Uh, and not a full valuation, uh, which that would entail. Taking uh aging and deterioration and stuff in the account to get a true value of what the assets are worth.
Okay, so do you have a ballpark bigger of what our system might be worth? We were ever to consider, for instance, selling it to another entity or doing something different with it?
I, I don't have that information on hand right now, though. We, we would uh. I would have to. We, we have the replacement value.
Okay, which is what?
Uh, it's around twenty eight million.
So if everything was replaced brand new, it'd be about twenty.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, we, we have two major transformers right now and we seem to be doing okay. Will they be sufficient for the near future? Do we need to have some redundancy or a backup transformer?
For near future, they are, they are sufficient. Uh, it's not until the uh twenty. Uh, twenty forty, twenty forty five, where we see some capacity that, that might be an issue.
Yeah.
Um, so around that timing, you, you, the, in N minus one conditions. You will see some capacity issues where if you were had, had an outage. And it was during absolute peak load, middle of July. In a hot summer day, it could overload that.
Okay. But both of them together, we should be fine. If one fails, um. What do you, you just upgrade that one and we survive on the other one? Or do, should we have? But we don't have to have a third one in, for another ten years, fifteen years?
Well, I, I think that um. That you, I don't know of any utilities that necessarily or like co-ops that just have. Big transformers like that or emergencies. They usually have to rent a mobile transformer from their uh. Uh, transmission provider. For temporary services or there's other options.
So there's nobody to do that if we, we can, if something happens to one of them.
But in the near future, your, your transformers will serve the load uh until. I, I am not sure. I think it was around twenty forty that we were seeing that issue. Where the overloading might happen.
Yeah, the last transformer, I think it's one point two million dollars or so. So like we made a good investment with that.
There was a, a scroll down. One more?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, twenty, twenty thirty five. Yeah, around there.
And so, and, and just a general question, this might be for vote more than for you. So when we do the refresh, how much of that vote do we do in-house? Uh, how much do we? Contract out? Uh, what, what are our capabilities when we're doing with the refresh?
Refresh, what do you mean?
On our. On his, on his list there.
Yeah, on the list, when we did the refresh.
Uh, the recommendation improvements that we, uh, I think that's what you're referring to.
Yes, so like right now, I'm, I'm getting close. I was replacing the relays on the high side for the north and south transformer. Uh, be to. I like to start working on substation on the high side. And replacing the underground feeders from the, the breakers to the, to the poles where it goes out, it feeds that circuit.
Right.
Uh, those are very old, but yes, I like to start moving forward on it.
So, and the switches and insulators, can you do that in-house?
Uh, no, it would have to be contracted out.
Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to get a kind of an idea of what it's gonna cost us, what we can do in-house and what we can. Yeah, but we're gonna have to contract, have to take care of business.
We're gonna coast in a substation, yeah, a lot of that's gonna have to be contracted out.
Well, uh, Rob, I, well, I don't know if this is a time to talk about it when we're on the agenda, but. To me, this, most asset management plans we've seen, here's all of our, like our inventory of our water or whatever it is. This is what it costs to replace this and that and the value and like you're doing a financial statement, right? To me, this is more of a performance asset management plan. Like this is what we really need to make it work. And how do we make our? Our electric system uh meet the needs of our consumers and plan for the future more than what our typical asset management plan. And I, I thought that was.
I absolutely think that this is gonna be really good help for us too when we go out to apply for grants or we have it right here.
Right.
Yeah, like we'll mention, the sort of the GIS part of it. Uh, the, the electrical model might not be super easy for most people to navigate, but. The GIS part of it um is basically a, a, almost another digital twin of your, of your system. And as any changes that are made, you guys could then implement those changes right away and you'll have a full. Detailed inventory of your system with pictures. Uh, pole numbers, everything, locations, geolocation, and it's, it's uh projected on top of a. Kind of like a Google Earth map, sort of saying where you can zoom in and then. Even if you wanted to have it side by side by Google Earth, go to street view, I mean. It, it's super valuable in keeping inventory of, of your, your system for moving forward with any type of project.
Thanks. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I would like.
Go ahead.
Uh.
Yeah, I just came back from Germany and here you don't see a lot of overhead power lines. Besides, on the countryside connecting towns and villages with each other. And so my question is, yeah. Back in the day, I heard here that above ground versus underground costs were pretty much double. And I also heard that that is not a case anymore. Said it is balanced, pretty much balanced out the costs for both sides. Said here you can pretty much choose of going above ground or under ground. My my question is, when we are doing new neighborhoods, new development, hope we should go with the whole system above ground or go underground. So it would be a big difference, especially also with power loss and everything and the law. Hope it would be C stays efficiently or efficient enough to say, hey, we go underground for uh these future projects.
Okay, um, but I don't know if it's completely true that they have balanced out in costs. I think underground is still significantly more. And but there's give and takes engineering wise, uh the accessibility to underground is obviously there's no accessibility to it. It's gonna uh and then when you have new taps, it could cost more because you're going underground. You have a lot more equipment where uh if you are tapping into a an overhead pole, you just put another pole tapped in with some jumpers and 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 move along. So there's there's give and take uh in in terms of underground and and uh overhead. Uh, if you if you have a good portion, if you let's say you're putting in a new neighborhood and you know exactly what it's gonna be like and there's not like gonna be a bunch of taps off of it for incoming stuff. It's a planned neighborhood. Underground's a great option for that. And usually the option for those type of situations. Uh, so it it's all, it's kind of uh depending on what kind of infrastructure is getting put in place, where it's getting put in place. Um, and also the the budget feasibility, stuff like that. There there there's sometimes engineering restrictions where um because uh you get a lot more losses underground than overhead due to thermal heating. And so something that can be overhead with a certain conductor, you might have to double that and run two strats of a certain conductor underground because of the thermal heating. And so depending on what's in the ground and how deep it's going. There's there's just different factors where overhead, it's thirty feet in the air. We already know the uh the heat uh losses to that uh and that um where underground might require a little bit more engineering in terms of that heat loss to seek capacity where when it's overhead, you could just refer to a chart and know and know the capacity. Um, but there's give and takes, yeah, but there there still is a cost difference still to the act, yes.
Uh, then my other point was here with while we are growing, we have a it's a certain amount what we have to buy and everything that that is set. Um, and when we are growing, because we are still in the desert and I'm still a fan of solar and wind energy. Um, how would it be here? Could we make up for the future more pool uh when we just have your solar feeding into the grid? To make up the extra usage. Which would be feasible in that regards. I'm not talking it's a household, best to transport, so then I'm talking it's about pretty much feeding into the grid.
You you're trying like asking if solar is feasible on on this system or?
Yeah. Hope it would be as an addition to when we grow to make out for what we need more.
Yeah, so that that requires a feasibility study, a a system impact study. And the first thing you need when conducting a feels of feasibility or impact study is a detailed electrical model.
Exactly.
And so that model will uh enable you to to see the impact of any type of infrastructure tied into that system. And so it's not necessarily saying, oh, well, your system looks good, so it's feasible. It depends on where it's connecting in. And but the model can be an easy way to know exactly what upgrades will be needed to make it feasible because with infinite amount of budget or whatever, I mean, anything's we could anything's feasible. You update the conductor, the feeder breakers, you know, there you can make it feasible. It's just a matter of how much money is it gonna cost or what type of upgrades is it gonna take to get that solar in place? But it's if it uh it 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 is feasible. It just it'll tell you what would be needed, yeah.
Yeah, for me, wasn't just a point like you said, with the house. Said so, okay, the house gets set long and there's where it starts to lose power, when we would put here a smaller solar system to
Yeah.
Or level it out that is all.
For sure. Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Just here to to make up the losses.
Yeah, during peak peak uh peak loading, it will drop that peak loading and increase. It can increase transformer uh capacity. You have solar on when all the air conditioner is on, it's kind of canceling out that load that the transformer is serving. So in that regard, solar is a great benefit when it comes to uh desert cities like this for sure.
So with your study and with your model, what you created, we can have make some uh more cost efficient to make a study. Where they can use that model to have the efficiency and everything now. So it benefits us in future projects, so.
Definitely. Yeah, whether you invite developers to come and build or you guys get grant money or any or whatever, any funding to put solar on, you have a comprehensive model to get that study done within a couple of months, you know.
Okay. Back to that, Max.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Lo, as I am Jay Rupert, so thank you for coming here today.
Yeah.
Um, what I was trying to do is simplify this, so I would understand better what the what the plan is, because actually what we're doing later today will be voting on on this plan. So as I'm understanding this, okay, page three is summary recommendations.
Agreed.
All right, um, and you have short term, you have midterm, you have long term. And then my assumption would be is that the rest of the documents here probably would give you more specifics as to what these what the summary is. Okay, that's the basic assumption I'm making. Now, as I go through this, okay, that was page three, and I don't see anything recording uh the these recommendations on pages four through twelve. It looks like basically there you're talking about the s- system methodology or study methodology, excuse me, is the study result, et cetera. But I don't believe those pages don't really really address the recommendations, as I understand. Is that correct?
Uh, study results, yes, sir. That 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 tells you the data that we that we saw and recommendations would be uh uh yes, the recommendations would be our engineering document based on the study result.
Okay. So for the commissions that be analyzing this, I'm assuming what they would be doing is they would be harmonizing pages thirteen or sixteen with your page three. Page three is the summary. And now that's like thirteen through sixteen are actually what the workers that's that's projected to be done. Is that?
Uh, say that again, what where did?
O- okay, so page three gives us, it's had here, the summary recommendations. And again, pages four through twelve don't seem to address with the, you know, any of the recommendations. So my so my correct assuming is pages thirteen to sixteen is what the commission should be looking at. To to get specifics as to what the recommendations are.
Thirteen through sixteen, my answer.
Yeah.
This our presentation is a summary of a detailed report that we've provided. And then the details would be in specific details of recommendation upgrades would be provided in that report. It's just
Yeah, so.
Everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, he so there is a comprehensive report that we did provide, which gives a lot more detail. But I I would think uh thirteen through sixteen are still uh are still just data that that we collected in our analysis. Pretty much all the recommendations are in pages uh
Okay.
Three and four there.
So I I mean, this is a light person like myself. If I was analyzing the recommendations, I would have to look at the additional data to talk about this stuff. It's not this presentation, correct?
Yes, there are detailed the detailed description of those recommendations.
Okay.
And the and the comprehensive report that we prepared or and provided. And we'd be happy to address any questions as those come up, as you're looking through those recommendations.
And that's up to the commission. I I, you know, I just want to make sure I stood really what was in front and what you keep proving. So yes, okay.
This, Mr. Rupert, I appreciate it. Um, so not having the the actual plan in progress. Or do we feel comfortable in group?
That's that's my.
Um, and should it be made public first? Posted on our webpages and everywhere else so that people can review it and assess it and then uh provided provide feedback. I don't know if we need to have subsequent meeting. Um, what are your recommendations, Mr. Roy? What do you think?
Uh, there are members of the commission. I I would follow that that line. Again, the the documents we have are in draft form, so the document I've I've received and we've reviewed and and the electric team has reviewed these documents three times. We've met individually. Um, had an opportunity to address the engineering team with our questions and we've done so. But again, I I have the the intent of the meeting today would be for them to present that and for us to accept the report in their final. They they are final with their report, so uh we could either in in the action item would be to accept the report or take no action and and then we could present the form. You know, it would come out of draft form after today. And then the public could and we could have a public, you know, forum like we're doing with many things and and actually discuss and see more detail of the of the items that they've listed.
Yeah, I hope that makes sense. So what I'd like to do, and you guys hear me out, um if we do make a motion later on, we'll accept this presentation. But I think we should wait uh to approve the actual plan until we have a chance to look at it. Makes sense?
And there I would also say that the the document I would I did not take it to be a comprehensive roadmap set plan that once we adopt, that's the the process that we're gonna be in, right? That there are four pages of recommendations that some that our electric crew will will be able to do and some that have to be bid out. For example, one of them is ultimately a new substation, right? It it's in their plan that we should even though we're sufficiently right now, the system is good, but it should be. So I think it would be taking that plan and then you know, your electric team developing a work plan out of it, which is really the nice tool from this document, which is it's really gonna detail short-term fixes that we need to do midterm and long-term, and then we would be able to really assess that. So uh your your acceptance or approval of the document would by no means I would be thinking would put us in a set plan that that's exactly the way we're gonna go. But you have very, very good information, detailed information on the system.
Right.
So.
Thank you. All right.
And uh, just wanted to add into that after a little bit of clarification on that discussion is uh when billing the report, we did uh really focus on trying to minimize our recommendations to what would impact your utility the most in 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 terms of operability, reliability and performance.
Well, I think you accomplished what you wanted to accomplish as far as your presentation goes. I think we do wanna look at the details of the actual plan of uh just to, you know, to say that we done and have done our due diligence and make sure we go forward. Okay, all right. Right, that's it. There's no action at this time because it was just a presentation.
Thank you then.
I appreciate the opportunity. Forward any further discussion or questions.
All right, let's move on to item E, reports. City manager?
Uh, just like that. Well, good morning, everyone. Um, I'd like to go ahead and turn the body over to the chief, start with his reports. I'll conclude mine by last.
Good morning, Mayor. So my report's gonna be a reflection of the month of August. And uh some of the things that we were able to accomplish or or get done. Uh, we started the the month of August off with National Night Out, which is August fifth. Uh, great event, open to the community, kids. Uh, free event, so we had a bunch of different things. There are a bunch of uh providers in our community that are there for different services. Uh, that way the community understands what's available to them. It was it was nice. It was a pretty good turnout. When it came to training, we we had members of the the department attend uh advanced crime scene investigation training, uh taser instructor training, managing police services, some report writing for some of our newer guys, just to make sure that we're on par with what where we should be. Uh courtroom testimony, DWI uh SFST refreshers. Uh, the the whole department attended that. Uh, we also had the invitation as the sheriff's department, and we had the majority of the sheriff's department attend that as well. So that was a nice uh collective training that we we had. The officers responded to nine hundred and eighty-nine calls per service for the month of August, which is lower than it had been on the now the fall's coming on, our call line will average about in the nine hundreds. Uh, animal control had a hundred and twenty-nine calls per service. Our motor vehicle accidents, which is something I'm uh proud of for this month, is they went they went down substantially uh to five. So that's that's always nice to see that. Obviously, that affects us all, our insurance rates, they didn't suffer. That's that's nice. Officers had uh sky referrals, seventeen sky referrals. That's uh children, youth and family referrals for uh alleged abuse or neglect. And so there was seventeen of those reported for the month of August. Our school resource officer had five cases in the schools. Uh, we've conducted fifty-two follow-ups. And code enforcement has been working five different cases to try to get some abatements done. Officers conducted two hundred and nine traffic stops for the month of August and issued a hundred and forty-five citations. So I don't know if that has some any kind of correlation to the uh lowering of 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 motor vehicle accidents, but um they they were out there making stops. Uh, they also had eleven arrests for the month of August. Uh, so far, starting up September, just to get ahead a little bit, we did have a none of these crashes were on Broadway or Main. Uh, we did have a motor, a pedestrian versus uh vehicle on uh Main Street. A few, last week, I believe it was, uh, not related to the traffic pattern. It was more uh inattention of the driver. Being a one-way, they were looking to see if upcoming traffic was coming and not looking to the right where the crosswalk was. That's where the pedestrian was crossing. Uh, I get it. Sometimes we get in a hurry and we're not paying attention, but it is important for us to pay attention to pedestrians. They always do have the right way or should have the right way. And uh we did hire a new animal control officer. He he accepted the position. And so we're just waiting for him to go through the remainder of the process. It should be uh started shortly. So we are excited to have uh fully staffed and uh start working on some of these papers. With that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Um, the cases about CYF games, does that increase from the month before? I think that's a pretty high number.
Yes, it is. It is fairly high. Uh, school's back in session, so I mean that, you know, some of those referrals come from, you know, students uh or teachers, I should say. And so uh there there was a slide up to now whether there's a there's an allegation or suspicion of either abuse and neglect, and then what the actual findings are could be too different, right? So uh it's it's good that they're reporting.
Yes. That's right. I mean, schools out there, we don't know for the most part.
Right, yes, ma'am.
And I was I was gonna ask, I was all prepared for a question. I'm like, how are we with animal control officers? And there you go.
Yeah, we're excited. Great candidate.
So will that mean uh once he's through his training that we'll be fully staffed of animal control? I bet some people are happy about.
All right, we have questions.
Let's um, we have uh five departments that are recording up. Uh, the streets also has a presentation today, so I'm gonna have them just do their report when they do their presentation kind of use the time wisely. So let's start with utility. Let's hear from our utility.
Good morning, Mayor. Utility office, we have a lot going on, as per usual. Um, we've been working on um a new step in red tags. We're gonna start announcing the new work and on our city flyer. We're hoping to get away from the um red flat red tag where you put one on the door and we're gonna start mailing those out. And that'll save us having to have a department um take two people off of their crew to go out and pass out those red tags. We usually have about We usually have about fifty a week. So there, there's quite a few. Um, and then also we've been, I know I've been going out in the field a lot recently, going to look at meters, water meters and such. I've even dragged the city manager and the mayor out with me. Um, and that's great, getting out in the public, getting to know people, letting people know that we actually really, we really care. Um, water increased this month, September, it went up three percent. In July, um, the sewer did go up five percent and also the commercial trash rates went up um, last, I believe it was in July also. Um, so all those increases have been made. Um, we are not fully staffed. We're still looking for a customer service collection person. We do, we are getting quite a few, um, applications. So hopefully we find someone who's a good fit, who and puts the ground running. And I believe that's about it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Of course, I, um, the, it's shock. I'm going to ask a question. Uh, with all the increases the last, since the beginning of the fiscal year, um, how has been the response from the community? Have you been getting a lot of, I'm sure we're trying to get the word out and before that, that they were coming up, but I'm sure how has been the responses have been?
You know, we really haven't had, um, too many complaints about the rates.
Oh.
Um, I know we are so far behind on our rates anyways. Like the electric went up finally, but that was after twenty-two years and the water and, you know, everything. So we really haven't been getting too many complaints about the rates raising. Of course, we'll find out about water next month and I'll let you know next time I come. But I don't, it's not really a huge increase. It's three percent.
Right.
So, and that's just, you know, wear and tear.
And the new Doppler or what?
Oh, yeah.
Now that's different from the Doppler reporting leaks because it's the same name. So I was confused.
No, so the Doppler is going to be a wonderful system for the utility office also. Um, Jamie actually brought it. She talked to them and everything and it'll allow us to be able to send out text messages to people if the water is off or if electricity goes out, if the trash route changes, anything like that, we should be able to send out messages, text messages. And we've also incorporated text to pay in the utility office and it's totally self-managed. So anyone can sign up for that and it'll actually send text messages. And you can actually just hit yes to pay your bill or no to skip it, you know? But that's, that seems to have been picking up pretty fast in the community.
And how does it work yet? Can you explain it?
The text.
I know the, the Doppler and the text, can you explain it while you're standing there?
Yeah. So the text to pay is just self-managed. You can either call our one eight six six number or you can, um, do it online on our website. Um, you just enter your phone number, you enter the credit card and then it'll just send you text messages. You know, and if you don't pay your bill, that's another thing. It'll keep reminding you. It's kind of like a firm or one of those things, you know? Um, the Doppler, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Jamie call on up here and talk about that a little. It's actually her baby. I'm just helping. So.
Jamie's also going to be recording today, so we.
Okay, so that'll just.
Yeah, yes. It's actually been working with the Doppler. Um, and on our part in the utility office, anytime we have customers or anything like that, we're trying to update all numbers. Because, um, you know, for the police department, code enforcement, everyone comes to us sometimes for information. And we like to have the most updated information possible. So.
I have a short question.
Okay.
Um, when I'm signing up here for the auto pay and I design myself how to pay, is it here that all or nothing? So I have like here that I can split it up and like before, of course, a due date. But then I can say, okay, I have it right now, a hundred and fifty as example. I pay that right now, but I have it. But then it takes me another week to get served and I split some amount that I can put in a custom amount.
So you absolutely can. And we actually have, um, quite a few customers that make two or three payments. Um, if you do it straight through us, there's no fees. It ties into your savings and checking account and it gets pulled on, um, the day it's due. For that, it is the full amount. Now for text to pay or if you decide to do online or even if you call, it's your choice how much you want to pay. Yeah. And as long as, you know, you don't go past your next billing date, then everything's good. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a problem. Yeah, I was here in Alamo Gordo, out in Dogfengin and that was core. At core, yeah, I signed up for auto pay. And there was a problem that from one day to moment to the other, I had here nine hundred dollars deducted and it was, uh, an error on their side. And then it took me two months to get my money back.
Yes.
So that's why, uh, my fear is how here, so when especially since then, I don't do auto pay anymore, anything.
Right.
Uh, so then really I want to see them on first and then I say, okay, that makes sense. And then I.
And you know, it's such a coincidence you brought that up because we did have an issue like that just last week. Where someone would try to pay online and it would pull out three or four payments. Um, we did, Tyler was totally aware of it. It was their issue. They got it fixed and they did refund everyone except for the payment, the original payment they were making. Now they told me something like that will not happen again, but we only can do the best that they let us do. So.
Thank you very much. Thanks for that.
I did have one quick question. Uh, how much does the, the clerk position pay the utility?
Customers.
Customer service.
The customer service. I believe it's going to be starting at.
At the, at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I believe it's around sixteen dollars, but I could be wrong. So.
Cause I was looking at the job description and it didn't say it and stuff.
Just depending on that also, depending on experience is, I mean, we might just end up with someone awesome, you know? That's my plan anyway. Any more questions? All right. Well, thank you guys for having me and you guys all have a wonderful day.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll add a couple of points. Um, the, the, the new part of Doppler is in addition to the current system. So it's an enhancement that Jamie's been working on and then, uh, the departments have been working together to, to, to bring that past. Then I would say the other items, i.e. the red tag, we talked a little bit about that. These are all changes that we're trying to make. We hope to be working with customer service person to give Sonya one more opportunity. We need to get that hired. These are the enhancements we want to do where the customer has multiple ways to pay. We have multiple ways to help. Um, I would say to, you know, the, most of the issues we've been on over the last couple of months have been not necessarily that my bill's a little higher by three percent, but we have a weird reading. So a customer goes along really good for four, five, six, eight months and then they get a nine hundred dollar bill. And, you know, that's the concern. So that's where our customer service person, we're really looking to make sure. And then we're putting in processes that would make sure that those customers, we have a way to help them. So in, in, in two of the cases that we've gone to, we could easily know that it was not a use of water. It was an error in the meter, an error in reading, uh, just those kinds of things. So that's what this customer service person will do. And we feel like again, by, by not having somebody drive around all week to hang a red tag on the door, that when they see it, then they come in and they pay, if we could figure that out, you know, we're going to be just more efficient and have more hands-on deck to deal with. Potentially reading the meters correctly or making sure we, if we made an error, we could send somebody. That's a better use of our time to go look at the meter again and see if we, if we didn't read it correctly, let's fix it and not charge somebody. Okay? So that's what we're, those are some of the enhancements.
One more thing I forgot. We're also doing, I mean, we've always been doing deposits, but the amount of the deposits are changing. And it's also because of the rates, the prices of the meters, so on and so forth. But the deposits that we've been collecting hopefully will help us, um, collect from people who might move or leave or get kicked out of their property. And so that's been working really well for us also.
Thank you.
And so Mayor members of the commission, Jamie will talk about water and wastewater. Since we segredated into that.
I want to mention his name. Um, so as we decided notify, which is through Doppler, it's live, um, we're asking all customers to sign up either through the QR code that's being provided on the sales page. It's, it's also been provided in the newsletter that goes out with billing. They can also, um, call and update their phone number at our office and we'll take their phone number and their information. The way notify works is that it's an automated text message. We can go in there if we have a issue at anywhere and highlight an area and it's an automated text message, phone call or email, your choice to, um, let you know if there's an issue with our utilities. So we're using it for electrical outages, water outages, um, changes in trash routes, those kinds of things. Um, if we have to, if streets needs to close a road for some reason, in those, those, in those instances. Um, I'm going to move on to water. Right now we're at about thirty leaks in the city. I have crews working, um, Tuesday through Thursday, full-time on leaks. And then though we're doing our maintenance stuff on Mondays and Fridays, and that also allows, uh, additional meter release on Mondays and Fridays. So that way we can make sure billing gets out. Um, our meter projects, well, two is moving along fairly quickly. Uh, the building has been torn down. They, uh, will have the pitless motor adapter here tomorrow. And they plan on installing the new motor and the adapter and the electrical net, um, the week of the twenty-second. Um, shovel ready has been sent out to bid. So we're just waiting on any of those. Whiskey one will hopefully go out to bid in the next few months. Followed by whiskey two early next year and critical water lines after that. The meter project that allows the AMI meters for a good portion of the city. Well, we're just waiting, pending paperwork on that one. And then that should be able to go out to bid also. Um, wastewater, the vacuum project as, um, and we have, we're waiting on an RFI for construction and design through engineering. Or sorry, an RFP. Um, in the meantime, we are still going out there for about four times a day to flush lines to maintain the vacuum pressure lines to be in the lines. And we're also going out there and replacing any components in the pits that need to be replaced as needed. And I wish to have any questions.
Mr. Sanders?
How are you, with your staffing?
We, um, I have one pending, um, completion of paperwork and then we will be fully staffed.
That's always good news.
Yes. I got a new admin last month.
That's always good.
Well, get him right now. Know somebody will probably steal him soon.
Yes, ma'am. Those are always being stolen.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. And then, uh, let's hear from Wyatt in Fleet.
Good morning, Mayor and Commission. Uh, let's see, at the service center, since our beginning of the fiscal year, we've done seventeen full services, replaced seven sets of tires, had eighteen tire repairs. Some of our larger projects, uh, we had three mowers go down for the, uh, for the parkers department. And we also replaced the primary and secondary clutches on their Polaris Ranger. The golf course had a larger mower, um, garage shop flew off, hit the radiator. So took some time to get parts for that. Um, and they had a small John Deere tractor that we replaced the cylinders on for that. Um, for electric, their digger truck, the def tank, um, we replaced. And then we also had the water and wastewater's tractor truck in for brakes, air conditioning service. Right now at the service center, we've got the street sweeper that'll replace the rollers on it. Uh, we have their six twenty-one loader placing fuel lines and, uh, we have all the filters to do a full service. And I also have a trash truck. We're replacing the, the big long arm bar that picks up the dumpsters. Uh, two of those actually had the same problem. So I'm, I've been talking with the folks that sold us those parts to see if that's a common issue they have with that particular trash truck. Uh, outsourced right now, we've had two of Park's trucks get, uh, collision repair. One of them's done, so that's been returned. And then the other one is being handled through insurance. Um, SWA Southwest Auto Body is handling that.
Okay, just a second. Why are you saying the Parks Department is out of control? So they have all of those.
Just had an accident.
Yeah, two accidents and all that. What the heck is going on?
I am not saying anything.
Sorry.
It's okay. Otherwise, um, some trainings going on. Daniel and myself will be going to El Paso next week. We're going to learn about hydraulics. And, uh, this is a class that our master tech country, he's already taken. So he'll be at the shop by himself for a couple of days. And then, um, well, and then Daniel's also going to be going in for his CDL coming this winter. I believe that's about what I've got for you guys. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I want to say, yeah, thank you for your report. And here, it looks like here you are getting a handle out of, uh, everything, sits here and manage everything. And so in the future, I'm looking forward to when cars have to be replaced or any things that makes sense, recommendations. And yeah, it looks good. And I'm happy here to have you on board and moving forward.
Thank you. And to talk about new things, um, we did get two new, uh, John Deere gators for the golf course. So they're, they're about five years old. Both of them are used, but they're in, they're in really good shape. They're cool units. So. Thank you.
I have a question. Don't think you can get away with that quick, Wyatt.
Okay.
One is a simple question. How are you with your staffing now? Are you fully staffed or?
Um, yes, still, uh, I want to take some time to see what a third hand might do just, just for the quick stuff, the oil changes. And that way the, the other two gentlemen can, uh, can really handle the bigger projects where stuff is catastrophic kind of a thing. Um, so that's, that's definitely on the back burner. I haven't, I haven't really had much time to consider a new employee, but, uh, that, that is on my mind.
And then I wanted to ask about CDL. And I don't know if this question for you Wyatt or for Gary. So, um, what is a process? I know, uh, individuals, what they have to go through to get their CDL, it's, uh, very cumbersome and expensive. And, um, I, and I was thinking, is it similar to when, um, so the city, uh, we could get a public test site applicator's license. Anybody could just go take the test. A commercial one, there, there's all kinds of internship you have to do. It takes several years. And so I was just wondering, I, I know we have quite a few people on staff that have their CDL. When we send them for that, does it cost the four thousand or six thousand dollars? It does for the general public or how does that work?
Mayor members, uh, the last requests we've signed have been for the four thousand. And so I don't, I've not seen it. And certainly I would say, uh, human resources alone and I have not talked about, is there a program we could go through? But it seems that when they take it, they have to take the full class. Yeah.
And, uh, like for personally, I went through Doaniana Community College. So, um, I'm unaware if there's, there's a program specifically for government entities to do that.
But it used to.
Okay. Cause when they've gone down there, it's a seven week program and that's, that's where I came out.
As federal employees have to get CDLs and they don't pay four thousand dollars for their classes. So it might, I mean, some federal employees, not all of course, but there might be one, but uh, that's a big investment. So like pay for them to do that. Do they have to sign something in blood that they have to stay here? Do they have to sign something in blood that they have to stay here long enough to justify the cost of the CDL? Cause that, that's a lot of money putting into somebody that then they're, they're gone in a month. So I, I hope we made wise decisions when we send people for a CDL class. Let Gary ship them to go.
There used to be a program where you could have a CDL instructor on, on staff. Uh, go through the training and then train your staff. They still had to go through the training uh or through the testing at the state level, but we could train them in-house. So I, I think that might be something we could look into.
Absolutely.
And just see somebody who will get that certification and, and we can do our own training and then send them off to get tested.
Sure.
Take the tests, the classes.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Where, where do you send them to?
Um Doniana, Doniana Community College, yeah.
Good. All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you Wyatt.
Thank you. You'll have a wonderful day.
Yes, sir.
You're doing a nice job, right? And let's uh finish with the clerk.
Um, the first thing I wanted to talk about is um our upcoming election. Um, so a lot of people get confused on our election, so I just kinda wanted to let the community know that our elections are held through the county clerk's office. Um, this year it will be on Tuesday, November four. Um, from seven AM to seven PM. So on Election Day, we have our different um areas for elections. That is a countywide one. The one for Tier C will be here in the civic center. Um, the city of Tier C has two open seats available. We have six candidates that are running and one ride in. Um absentee and early voting will begin October seventh. Um, that will be held at the Sierra County Offices at seventeen twelve North H Street during regular business hours from eight to five. Um, the last day for early voting will be Saturday, November first from ten AM to six PM, and that'll also be at the county. Um, our candidates that will be elected will start their office January first, twenty twenty-six. Um, their oath of office will be done at the first meeting in um January. And then um usually what I do is I will give them a um newly elected, newly elected officials packet, and that has like our open meetings act. You guys already know that, but just for our new candidates, if we get any. Um, open meetings act, the governmental conduct act. And then it has the governing body code of ethics and then a bunch of other useful information. And then we also will um, we encourage them to go to the newly elected official screening. And then um I also wanted to update that we are gonna have our animal ordinance workshop. Um, that will be held on September twenty-fourth. We'll have it after our regular scheduled meeting. Um, we're looking at probably around five thirty. Um, so the public will have the opportunity to voice their concerns, give us their feedback. Um, and then at that time, um you as a commission, you guys will um let us know if you guys are ready for us to take the public hearing and final adoption at the first meeting in October. Or we can also extend it to the November or December meeting, or if you guys think it'd be more fun, we can extend it from there too. Um, we've been doing, of course, a lot of like business licenses, um IFRS, stuff like that, um for rentals in our office. Um, right now we're doing renewals for our short-term rentals. Um, they're staggered. How we have it now is they are due once our um inspections are done. Then we issue the license and it's um due a year from that date. What we're trying to do is we're wanting to change it to where it falls into um the date that their business license is due, since they are required to have a business license. I think that'll be easier on everybody. It'll help them remember. It'll help Tyler on all of his inspections as well, so. Um, that's something we're looking into just to, we're going through the ordinance, just to make sure that's something that we can do. Um, and I think that's all I have. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you.
Um, could you reiterate to the public how the elections will work? I think it's still confusing, you're not ready for a position, you know, and how that works.
Yes, so um right now how we do it is it's at large. So our seven candidates will run and our top two, since we have two positions open. Our top two highest votes will be the two that are elected.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about Airbnbs?
Yeah.
So um if a person signs up for Airbnb, Airbnb automatically assesses taxes and sends them to the city. Is that correct?
Airbnb does. They do the five percent right now. Um, they're not doing the one percent. So most of our um the people that we do have registered that go through Airbnb, they submit the one percent on their own. Um, we're trying to work with Airbnb to see if they can automatically do that one percent. It's not easy unless we have an account with them. They don't really wanna talk to us. But we're still, we're still working with um a couple people to try to get that established. But we are getting, even if they're not registered with the city. We are getting that revenue from everybody that has an Airbnb in the city limits and treats the consequences. We are getting that five percent.
Good, and that's Airbnb. Now we know there's sort of other companies like Verbo and others that are a little more difficult to work with. Is that correct?
No, they're actually easier than Airbnb. So we are, they're like Verbo um with them, when they send us the check, they actually give us the address of everybody. Um, yeah, Airbnb, they just send us a, a one-month check and so, yeah. We're getting the revenue. We just don't know who it goes to. Yeah.
There seems to be some discussion out there that uh we're not collecting all the fees possible from Airbnbs or companies like that. Um, how do you think we're doing or how do you think they're doing?
I think we're doing great. I, we're getting a lot of revenue from it. Um, like I said, the only thing we're not collecting is that one percent. But we're not collecting it from Airbnb, but the people who are registered are coming in, so um there, we do have a lot that aren't registered, so we're not collecting that one percent from them, but we do get their five percent. So we are still not collecting that revenue.
Okay. Thank you for me. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, um Mayor members of the commission, I would uh, we'll, we'll let Streets do a, a full report when they get up here. We'll get them going as quick as we can. I'll do my report just to finish up and wrap. Uh, we continue to work on the back station. I just saw it came, it got on top of our list. We, we recognize how important that is. Um, the, the engineering document that we had expired in September, so we had to go through a new RFP. We have that finances working with Tracy. We'll get that new document out, get the uh engineering in. So we'll be replacing our, our goal there is to use the funds we have to replace and work on the fifty-one pits that are a problem. We've already replaced the motors in the back. We'll be replacing some of the vacuum system. Um, and then we'll be using some of our general obligation bonds to fix one of the streets. Uh, Hagan Street seems to be the problem uh within the line, so those three things. Uh, interesting phone call yesterday from a contractor and a water user, a, a water um operator in or around Corpus Christi that happened to have read our minutes or saw our meeting and understood we had a back station. Um, and they've offered to sup- uh supply us with some help and support. They have another product that's different than Airback. Their, their position is Airback doesn't control the whole market and that back stations work. They work really well in low-lying areas and they said their problems are the same that we're having. And so I've asked them to send me some information and they've offered to help. I, I, I'm not sure if they were looking for an opportunity to bid on the project or for just being supported. But it was a very interesting and a worthwhile call for my time yesterday, very, very helpful. Uh, we brought you up to speed a few times. The Morgan Street Project continues. Um, that, that developer is building rentals, which you know, obviously we need rentals in town for long-term rentals. They have their next four houses going up. One of the challenges there is again, we don't have sewer accessible to the next area that they have, so we've been working through that. We did receive our engineering preliminary study and it looks like we can do a pretty simplistic um gravity feed uh to a, a manhole and a system that we have there. Um, we'll be meeting with the property owner next week, so we are in, you know, we're invested. They paid their impact fees. We have a little money in the bank, but it is gonna cost us some dollars to extend sewer and get it to a spot where they can hook up the rest of those homes and continue to develop them, their property. Unfortunately, the sewer in that area is all the way across the Morgan Street ditch. So we wouldn't, we would have no way to extend a line all the way and get through the ditch. So we're gonna have to do something on the site. So every resident has sewer there except for this one particular track. So we continue to work on that. Um, as you know, earlier this year, we um had entered into a contract with Four by Four Services, Jesse Cole, to be our wastewater water um licensure, right? He is, he is licensed for a level four in both water and wastewater and he has his own consulting business. Uh, Jesse did have uh some health issues for a few months and had to step away, but he's fully back in. Uh, we've re-um engaged with him. We've come up with a different little process that we're doing. We're still inside the professional services agreement, but our fee with Jesse will be a little bit, well, it won't be as high as it was. But we did make an agreement that we are paying Jesse um and, and that contractor for his licensure. Uh, I wanted to make sure, and so we kinda cleaned that up a little bit and in the agreement would, would require him to provide us ninety days notice if he needed to step away, so that we would make sure we could replace that. We do have to have a level four wastewater, a level three water to be compliant with the environment department. We are, we continue to work through that. Wastewater still continues to meet all the testing requirements, but we, we are, as we've said before, we're still kinda broken and we're working on that plan. Uh, hopefully we'll be meeting with Mary Jo and the folks at the Veterans Wall, talk about the helicopter. Just remind everybody, we do have a helicopter for that site, a museum piece. Uh, but we ran into some snags uh on trying to get it ready for this Veterans Day, but we'll be meeting um to bring that up. See where we can get. And finally, we're, we're gonna start as, hopefully through today, we, we've got um the paid study in order. We're excited to present that to you. We've got a few big projects we, we think we're bringing to, to the end. And so we really wanna get started on some planning and zoning changes. Uh, the committee's been working on different little issues with that. And so we would, we hope in the next few months to be starting to present ideas within the planning and zoning code that we potentially need to change. I re- I remind the commission, one of the challenges I, I think we face is a process by which we can adjudicate issues that come before us. Like how do we get somebody if they, if they don't wanna clean their yard, how do we get them there? Um, right now we're doing that through magistrate and certainly don't, I have no intention of being disrespectful to the magistrate court. They're doing a great job for us, but their docket is busy as well. So that process has become timely for both sides. And so we will continue working with the police department on finding a, a potential new way that we could try to make, some way that we could enforce some of the code issues that we potentially have. Um, and so, and then we'll be looking at Airbnb and kind of some of those things where we can enhance that. Again, we've looked at the system, the, the situation with that, and we agree. If you're registered on Airbnb to rent your site, Airbnb is responsible for making sure that you're paying what the city has. That's a relationship between the city and Airbnb, so we feel like we're collecting. We just could do a better job of having the addresses, making sure we're inspecting them properly, making sure we get business licenses and those things. We'll continue to work on those issues. And with that, that's the end of my report and I'll stand for any questions that we could answer. See, we're busy, Mayor.
Yeah.
We're trying really hard.
Great, good report. Any questions?
Okay.
I think we're good.
All right.
Did you wanna call Streets?
Uh, no, they're gonna come up and do their report when they do that presentation.
Okay, perfect. Move on, maybe, to the city commission reports.
Moving forward.
Okay, you, you, uh, good start.
That's a good start.
Here you go.
Okay, well, I just wanted to remind everybody about our Fall Fiesta. It's our first Fall Fiesta we've ever done. Um, it's taking place this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Um, we're doing kicking off Friday night with a horseshoe tournament at Ralph Edwards Park. And uh live music at the brewery, tequila nights, and we're gonna have our own special Fiesta hat merchandise bar. You can make your own hat, get your Fiesta logo put on it right there. Customize it um with Rebel Road Runner. It's gonna be uh hosting that. Uh, we have a Tier C Animal Shelters doing a pet parade on Saturday morning at the Healing Waters Plaza. They're also doing an uh all-day adoption event with Desert Havens, grand opening of their Jones Street Shop. I don't remember what, oh, Jones Street, right. It's adorable. Um, anyways, uh we'll have live music on the plaza, all-day games, pie eating contests, scavenger hunt, cakewalks, tons of stuff. Um, Saturday night is transitioning into the second Saturday art hop. Um, and we'll have food trucks along the, the plaza. Uh, Crab Kings is gonna be here and Smoke Shack and Rusty Roots. And vendors again along the plaza. And then Saturday or Sunday is bowling tournament at Side Fix at eleven. And our second game show of uh Truth or Consequences, the live game show. We are still looking for contestants and you can get um, you guys can get uh tickets online on our website, tiercpesta.com. And um that's what I'm doing this weekend.
Reverend?
Yes, uh, it's good to be back, of course, each time when I go home and visit. Yeah, I come back with ideas and it's fantastic. So uh it will, you may know over time, I fear this is the manager, I've lost talks and ideas. Uh, what I liked here under this here is this Fall Fiesta, uh, put out here for the future, um, next year. Uh, I was at a music festival as well, and it was pretty much uh a fundraiser. So in that was completely one and was your ticketed. You had to buy a ticket, it was a whole weekend, also Friday, Saturday, Sunday at one location. Uh, with multiple music bands, but here how it was organized was every city department was there. Uh, that means here the red cross, uh, the police department, different departments. Uh, then also all nonprofits was there. And what I do is everybody volunteers. They're collecting uh monies for the festival and that's the end of the festivals. The profits are divided among all nonprofits, all organizations, and that helps them to keep going. And yeah, I think that is a pretty good idea to do something like that and with Wolf Edwards. Have a controlled environment where you could do uh a picket event as well. And so I think you said it's something to look into. And then of course here different ideas when it comes to parks and, and blinders and stuff like that. But here more of that here, you too. And of course our top is here and with uh Fall Fiesta. We will also as act, uh, we'll have our after-party going on again. So we will be indirectly part of it once again and here our talk here next month. Yeah, we will have a desert cloud fest at uh Healing Waters Plaza. That's so pretty much it here. Glad to be back and back in action, all rested up and.
Good. Moving forward. Welcome back. Thank you. Uh, for my report, um, yeah, to start out with, um, met with our first Sierra Vista Hospital CEO candidate, Shannon Cameron on May twenty-eighth. Uh, so the way the, the process works, we spent uh about an hour and a half with her initially uh on a virtual interview. Then uh, then we invited her for onsite visit and an interview, another two or three-hour interview with our, with our uh mayors and city representatives on uh May twenty-eighth. And then we went out to dinner that night, uh, kinda see how they are in a social setting and, and talk a little bit more. So we're going through that process the second time today. So after this meeting, I go straight to the Sierra Vista Hospital. Our second uh CEO candidate, Bert Klein, will be here. Uh, we'll do the same thing. We'll have a two or three-hour interview with him and then we'll take him out for dinner tonight. And then we'll do it one more time on September fifteenth with our last candidate. Um, if we don't like any of them, we don't make a selection. We have a good CEO right now that's an interim that'll stay here for up to a year. Uh, if we are uh enamored with a particular candidate, we'll make an offer. Generally CEOs uh for a hospital our size in this area make about two hundred and seventy thousand a year. Um, so it's, it's a high-power job. Uh, these are professional folks that we're interviewing. Um, and so it, it's kind of an exciting process, but we're looking forward to it. We have three good candidates, but we already have ten or twelve candidates in the hopper if we don't make a selection this time. So we'll take our time and hopefully find a good candidate that's gonna stay with us for a long time. Uh, our hospital is in good shape. Um, we have um thirteen million dollars in cash on hand at the hospital over a hundred and thirty days. The hospital can function if we have no money coming in. Um, we're, we're doing pretty well. The hospital is not to the point where it's self-sustaining. A lot of the money that we have at the hospital are, are, you know, it's government grants, government funding. Uh, that's why our balances are so high. Uh, but we're getting closer and so uh, you know, that, that's a good thing for our hospital. Uh, it's in great condition, looking forward for, looking for a good. Uh, it's in great condition. Looking forward for, looking for a good CEO to handle it and to keep us moving in a forward direction. Um, met, um, this last week, met with some representative from Senator Heinrich's office, uh, at the library. They were here for, uh, Veterans Affairs. And I talked with him essentially, but my reason for meeting was I wanted to extend my thanks to Senator Heinrich for his uh, past support of our water systems and the money that he's given us. And, uh, we have another five point two million dollars in the hopper that we're hoping we're gonna get next year. Um, and so I wanted to extend a, a thank you out to Senator Heinrich and, uh, and also make sure that he remembers us down the road when we seek additional funding. Um, we received a letter recently from Representative Vazquez's office regarding Clancy Street. Um, it seems that, uh, we, we have made the next cut to the House, to the House Appropriations Committee, uh, to the tune of one million and ninety-two thousand instead of the one point two million that we asked for. Uh, but that means we're still, uh, we're still in the mix, uh, and we're waiting for federal budget approval down the road. And hopefully we'll get that funding for Clancy Street. And then, um, spent a, probably a little more time than I should, uh, at trying to figure out a way that we could save that, uh, palm tree that's next to the city offices that we have to move for our, uh, charging station. Um, so I've been trying to do some research. If, if we can relocate it, it's gonna be pretty expensive to do that. I called several nurseries in Las Cruces. None of them do it anymore. So I don't know if we're gonna be able, able to relocate it. Um, uh, I'm, I'm dealing or talking with a professor at NMSU right now. He was one of the two, um, authorities that, uh, know more about palm trees than probably anybody else on the planet. And, uh, working with him to try to see what we can do. But my sense is that we're probably gonna have to remove that palm tree, but, uh, the pups that are underneath the palm tree, we may, we may be able to relocate. And so although we might lose one, one big tree, we may be able to relocate the, the, the small pups underneath, which is three to five different palm trees that we can relocate somewhere else. So we'll, we'll try to do that. And that's kinda been a fun project. I learned a lot about monocots and diakots and and all that kinda stuff. I have a little bit more, um, than like, although they call it a palm tree, it's not a tree. It's actually, uh, a grass. Uh, and so, uh, so I got a pretty good education from this, this professor. So it's been interesting and it's been a fun thought. And that kinda concludes my report for now. So with that, uh, Mr. Rubens, you have a report?
Yes, good morning. I just wanna elaborate further on, uh, this tourist's report about the animal patrol, or just I appreciate the information you provided. And I just wanna mention that, uh, just to try to give the commission some guidance, maybe even save us some time when we have the workshop on the twenty-fourth. I've already gone through the ordinance and I've already written a letter to, uh, I think to, uh, Mr. Whitehead, and I think also to Officer Noll, and just, uh, point us on my observations. I think I talked about one of our previous meetings. Uh, I think it's a feedback from Officer Noll a couple of days ago, so I'm gonna compare his observations to mine. So hopefully I'll have it organized way in advance the twenty-fourth, so he'll be able to see really where we are. So.
Yeah.
So I have.
Thank you. That concludes our reports. Thank you all very much. Let's move on to the consent calendar, which consists of item one, city commission regular minutes for August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item two, city commission regular minutes for August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. August twenty twenty-five accounts payable and a take-home vehicle form. Do we have any concerns or questions concerning our consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second, stores. Motion varies unanimously. And, uh, let's go ahead and take about a five-minute break. Let everybody use the facilities and we'll get back at it at seven oh five. Thank you.